Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular session of the Williamsburg Planning Commission for February 18th. Ms. Murphy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Clee.
Here.
Mr. Conley.
Here.
Ms. Faraqas.
Here.
Ms. McBeth.
Here.
Mr. Pauls.
Our first order of business is approval of the minutes from January 14th and February 4th. I'd like to take the approval of these minutes separately, please. We hear a motion to approve the minutes for January 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Schaller.
I abstain.
Mr. Clee.
Aye.
Mr. Conley.
I abstain.
Mr. Faraqas.
Aye.
Ms. McBeth.
Aye.
Okay, and now on the February 4th minutes for our special meeting. I move we approve those minutes as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Murphy?
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Clee.
I abstain.
Mr. Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Faraqas.
Aye.
Ms. McBeth.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda items. Under the consent agenda, we have PCR-15-001, the request of QuarterPath Williamsburg LLC for approval of a two-lot development plan in the new development by Riverside. Looking back in the minutes, when this went to site plan review, there was only one person from the commission that was able to attend, and I had posed a question to Mr. Nestor in regards to the reason for the subdivision, and I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda and discuss it for a few minutes, if we may, if that's okay with the rest of the commission.
Okay.
Reed, can you give us a brief overview of what's going on here, and just to clarify the rules on the site plan review committee, and just for the record?
Well, as far as the site plan committee goes, at that meeting, we had, Sarah was the only person present at the meeting, there was no recommendation, so we proceeded with the staff recommendation without a specific recommendation from the site plan review committee. This proposed subdivision meets all the standards of the ordinance, and our policy had been in the past when we have a site plan, our subdivision meets all the standards, it's put on as a consent agenda item. But I can briefly go over the proposal, if you would like.
Please, if you don't mind.
What you see outlined, what you see on the screen is the approved preliminary plat for QuarterPath at Williamsburg, and the two-lot subdivision, two-lot development plan we are looking at is outlined in red. The most developable part is shown as Lot 13. What you see here also is, we have a multi-use, a shared use path along Readout Road coming down to the cul-de-sac, and then this portion is built from the cul-de-sac all the way down to this lot. Then, it was proposed in the preliminary plat that the shared use path be relocated through the middle of this property, and the reason for that was, a standard sidewalk was built down from here to here before it was decided to build the shared use path, that why, that's why the shared use path does not go all the way to the corner. This shows the area we're talking about, an aerial photograph showing the location of QuarterPath Shopping Center. What we were able to work out on this is, instead of having the shared use path go along this way, is to have the existing concrete sidewalk, which is six feet widened, to be ten feet wide, so it would be a continuation of the existing shared use path paralleling Battery Boulevard. It will turn the corner, and then cross this future entrance here, and then it can be tied in with the future shared use path along QuarterPath Road. And the idea for that is when Readout Road is built, which will sort of parallel this section of QuarterPath Road, when this road is open, then the dirt portion of QuarterPath Road from about here down to here will be closed and converted into a ten-floor shared use path. But the city council didn't want to close QuarterPath Road until Readout Road was built, so there will be two parcels, the corner parcel, parcel two, which is the most readily developed parcel, and parcel one, which is a lot narrower, particularly when you factor in the existing resource protection area. So approval of development plan will create two lots of record that can be sold individually, and it will improve the shared use path, or relocate the shared use path. So if this is approved to record the plat, absent any specific development plans, now there will need to be subdivision agreement with the city, and a bond or letter of credit posted to ensure the relocation of the shared use path, and the relocation of a couple light poles, and then the property could be subdivided, then at the point that there is an actual development plan for parcel two, that would come to Planning Commission for final site plan approval. It's not in an architectural review district, so ARB is not involved, and I would say most likely, the shared use path would be improved there in conjunction with site work on property. So that's the proposal at this point, and it's not necessary to have a site plan of development for parcel two at this point. In some cases, you would have them coming together, but there's nothing that says you can't just create a two-lot subdivision, and as long as all the infrastructure is completed or bonded. So that's where we are with the proposal at this point.
Yeah, when I'm, you know, there was no recommendation from site planners, we didn't have the power.
Right.
But in looking over these plans very carefully, and thinking about, in particular, this relocation of the multi-use path, it's a better relocation, because if people are going to be using that to get to the shopping center, they wouldn't have gone around the back, they would have then, at some point, jumped off the multi-use path onto the road, and this keeps them easily, sort of making their way clearly to the shopping center, without tempting them to jump onto the road and cause issues there. So I think it's actually a better placement of that multi-use path, and really, that's the biggest thing about, I mean, sort of setting these two parcels, that other parcel, I mean, we talked about what could go there, I mean, there's almost nothing that could go there, except for a single, one single-family home, and I don't know if somebody's going to want either one home in between two commercial areas, right, right behind, you know, the shopping center, so it didn't trouble me, what was being proposed, just that we didn't have enough people to have a vote on it.
There are representatives here from QuarterPath LLC, if you have any questions.
No, I just wanted to make sure that it did come before the commission, and everybody had a chance to comment on it, since we did not get a recommendation from site plan review. I don't know if the others here that are on site plan, if you have any comments.
Well, I have one comment. So Reed, in the preliminary plat for QuarterPath, what is labeled as Area 13 is now what will be, I guess, parcel two, and what is now parcel one of that area, in the, at least in that plat, looks as if it was planned to be undeveloped property. Maybe that's a misinterpretation of that plan, because that plan is, you know, the little weirdly shaped rectangle, it's a different shape there, it's a hippopotamus, I guess, but that's now parcel two, what is now parcel one was not in any plat designation, so it really wasn't under, what I thought of as area that was not planned to be developed, or maybe just was not perceived to be developable, like Sarah was saying, maybe just one odd house, but we're now putting that little triangular portion into play. Is that correct?
That would become a separate lot of record, there is a small developable area on it. The ED District regulations require that for the entire ED site, which is basically this area here, there has to be a total of 20% open space, with what's been developed, what's been approved so far with the Ora Apartments here, and the Townhouse development we had here, with the hospital, we have about 16% of the total lot area is open space, so I don't think there'll be any issues in meeting that total open space requirement. So when the preliminary plat was envisioned here, Lot 13 was shown to be a developable portion, and no real lot was shown here, based on the additional information that's been provided with this development plan, there is a small developable area, so I don't think that there is a reason not to approve the two-lot subdivisions, since there are small, there's a developable area on each lot, and parcel one has an access easement across parcel two, so that through that existing entrance here, you can see here is the easement, so the improved, the approved portion of QuarterPath Road ends right here, so there is a means to get into this parcel without accessing QuarterPath Road, and compromising our ability to put the shared use path in there. There's also an issue where, as you go down the hill here, the street is sort of, I guess, through use over the years, it's sort of depressed a little bit, so there are some difficulties in getting it in here, so that's resolved by having that easement there, letting you get into it. But this back parcel, obviously, does not have the development potential as the corner parcel has. I'd also point out, as you can see on the plat, there is a future plan for having a write-out, write-in and write-out somewhere in this area. Again, from the staff standpoint, we have no issues with the write-in, write-out entrance there, just the details of that need to be worked out with staff and planning commission during the final site plan stage.
Okay, you said applicant is present?
Yes.
Would you mind coming forward for a second?
Good afternoon, I'm Tracy Dowling with Riverside Health System. I reside at 10113 Squires Way in Twano.
Wonderful, welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
What is the catalyst for subdividing this property?
The catalyst for subdividing this is, we do have a purchase agreement, the parcel two is under contract, and that is the particular area that the purchaser wanted to purchase, so that's really the catalyst of wanting to subdivide this parcel.
I'm fine with it.
Two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Someone like to try a motion? Okay, I move we approve PCR-15-001 as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Murphy?
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Clee.
Aye.
Mr. Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Faraqas.
Aye.
Ms. Stafford.
Aye. Ms. McBeth. Aye.
Moving on to our open forum, if anyone would like to come forward and speak now about any business that the Planning Commission has perved you over, you're more than welcome to do so now. Just please state your name and address for the record, please. Welcome, Mr. Cramble.
Thank you for tolerating me again. I simply am here to reaffirm what was discussed at your last meeting, and strongly urge you, well, David Cramble, 201 Harrison Avenue, and thank you for him, what was discussed at your last meeting, using the words of Elaine Macbeth of streetscape enhancement, or something like that, and put in the CIP $20,000, which will cover continuation of the very successful flowerpots, and expansion to the Triangle Block, which is a critical development area, struggling to bring tourists down to that area, and also to have some funds to, so that we designate the downtown commercial area with some sort of like a ribbon, as CW does on the light poles during the holiday season, which is, by most statistics, the most intense time for selling things and generating sales tax revenues, along with meal tax revenue. And as I mentioned, it was, this was strongly urged in a meeting with the mayor, when I was, we met with Adam Steele at the Blue Talon, and of course, it's strongly endorsed by him, who's head of the EDA Subcommittee on the Downtown Enhancement, and to best of my knowledge, strongly endorsed, personally at least, by Tom Gilman, my neighbor and head of the EDA at the moment. So I really strongly encourage you to put in that into the CIP recommended to City Council. Parenthetically, I also strongly support your emphasis on having underground wiring along Lafayette Street. It is a corridor, and I think everybody agreed, it is the worst, most unsightly above-ground wiring we have. It's important to get on the books, not next year, but somewhere between now and 2020, and you had an excellent discussion last time on priorities and moving some things around, and I hope you state that equally strongly, as I hope you'll state the $20,000 for the street enhancement. And it was an excellent discussion last time, so I'm just here to say, carry on. Thank you.
We did include it, just so you know, David, but we did recommend that the city include that into their operating budget, not into the CIP.
Well, okay, and the city council can, of course, do what it's empowered to do, but just so it's there.
Correct. It is there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joshua Fleetman, I'm a senior government major at the College of William &amp; Mary. I want to take a few minutes to talk to you about an issue that is perfectly related to Planning Commission. It's not a planning issue per se, but you are an important body of the city government, so I wanted to keep you updated on what's going on, if you weren't already. I am political director for the Student Impact, which is a student-run, nonpartisan political action committee, which was recently formed by students, with the goal of trying to get students at William &amp; Mary more civilly engaged in Williamsburg issues. And the issue we've taken up first is the noise ordinance. You may have seen a petition going around social media and other outlets. I've emailed the link to you, Chairman Faraqas, so you could distribute it to the other members of the commission, if they are interested in seeing it. But the petition so far is over a thousand signatures. We've gotten pretty decent media coverage from Williamsburg, Yorktown Daily, Wavy D's Town, et cetera. And so, in general, I just wanted to update you on what we're doing, so you can be aware of that. We are trying to gather support in the city to have the law amended, to be a little more fair, to better accommodate all of the city's residents. We are not looking to have the law abolished, because we know that it certainly has a very legitimate intent of protecting people from unreasonable noise disturbances, but we'd like to start a dialogue about how we can make specific changes to the law that could better accommodate all the residents of the city, and we want to do that in a dialogue that includes all the residents. So, you know, we want to reach out to non-student residents, we want to reach out to city leaders like yourselves, to make a better law for all the city. We are reaching out to various stakeholders, student assembly, the College of Administration, students and non-students, and hopefully, in the next few weeks, next few months, we'll see some action on this. The particular, in addition to the petition, there's one particular policy change that we're going to be pressing for more likely, which is trying to get the first violation of a noise ordinance decriminalized. Currently, it is a class-two misdemeanor, and a $300 fine, and we think that's a little bit extreme. Actually, the third offense within 12 months is a class-one misdemeanor, which is equivalent to a DUI or assault. So we think that the law could be a little more reasonable, a little less extreme, and if, I'll be available after the meeting, if any of you have questions you'd like to ask. That's pretty much it. So just want to let you know, keep you updated on what we're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the forum, and we'll move on to our unfinished business, which is the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 16 through 20.
You have a draft of a memorandum to the city manager, based on the commission's discussion at the February 4th work session. And of course, the draft, I tried to reflect the views of the commission in that, of course, it can be changed in any way you feel appropriate prior to making, you need to approve by motion that your formal comments to the city manager, and this will be forwarded on to you.
I'd like to start with Sarah.
Um, okay.
I think she knows why.
Yes, so I was unable to come to the work session, so obviously, I, when I saw what had happened at the work session, I was surprised, and not happily, by the revision in the priorities for the underground wiring. I take issue with Mr. Cramble, and I do not think that Lafayette is the most unsightly wiring problem that we have in the city. I think Second Street is the worst, and it is a primary entrance corridor, especially into the Northeast Triangle. There's been a lot of attention given, we had the Northeast Triangle Commission that spent a lot of time soliciting public input, lots of people were involved in that process. We made sure that the meetings were at times when people who can't usually make our Planning Commission meetings could come and participate and give their input, and one of the biggest things that came out of that process was the need for something to be done about the wiring issue on Second Street, because it really is a big eyesore, and it also causes a lot of issues with any attempts to redevelop and beautify, given the very small setbacks that most of the existing businesses have from the road, and sort of just the inability to plant anything out in front of people's businesses because of the way the wiring is, it just chuffs, you know, trees off at, you know, seven feet, and it's really bad. There has been a lot of investment in the area, and I think that rather than saying that that means that this is a lower priority, because, look, everybody's doing their own bit to pretty up that area, I think this is where the city really should be supporting those redevelopment efforts, and saying, yes, we're going to do our part, the part that we sort of committed to investing some money in this side of town, the side of town that often gets overlooked, doesn't get the same amount of public comment and support, just because of the nature of who lives in the area. So if I had any idea that Second Street would be sort of deprioritized, I would have called out reinforcements to have them come and make sure that that didn't happen, and so I would ask that we redraft that section to put Second Street back into the top priority for funding underground wiring projects, where it was when we had our last discussion about the priorities, I think, when we talked in the five-year planning process, it certainly was at the top of the list. South Henry, we had, sort of at that time, also said is lower priority, and I guess Lafayette Street now is a new addition, but I don't think it should become the most important addition. I think Second Street still should have priority.
I don't mean to speak for everyone on the commission, but I don't think we purposely deprioritize Second Street, because throughout this letter, you'll see, one of the things that's near and dear to my heart is the Capital Landing bypass road intersection, and other items that will continue to promote the Northeast Triangle. So I hope you don't feel that we were trying to push something back, but that's just the way things, the cards fell during the meeting.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that it could easily see, while we're doing, we think we want to work on the bypass road intersection, so that's what the Northeast Triangle is getting, but we all know that that is actually just planning money to think about what might happen sometime way down the road in the future. So I think that in terms of the sort of most visible true improvement that's going to happen in that area in the next two or three years, it would be the underground wiring. So I think that would really go a far way in showing the people who've put significant investments into the area, who are, you know, talking about redevelopment opportunities, to say, yes, we are, we are sort of putting our money where our mouth is, and saying, we are too going to do our part to help improve this area. I mean, it's true, it looks much nicer than it did two years ago, but there's still a far way to go, and so I think, you know, we still need to be working on that area.
Yeah, I tend to agree, and I say this, having also missed the meeting last time, so I, I'm sure there was a good discussion of Lafayette versus Second Street, and I'm sure there are very good reasons to put Lafayette Street, to make Lafayette Street a priority, but I also, I know that this is the second year now that we've proposed doing underground wiring on Second Street, and I could imagine, I could imagine Second Street merchants who might have had a glimmer of hope last year that they were going to get their underground wiring, now seeing this, and seeing that it's being deferred, not just a year because of finances, but then an additional year, because Lafayette Street has come in as a higher priority. I could see that being, I don't want to say discouraging, but yeah, I could see that being discouraging, and I think we've all observed just how much investment, how much private investment there has been along the commercial corridor there, over the last two or three years at most, I mean, it's really been pretty dramatic. So I do tend to agree that, unless there's a strong case, and maybe there is, and I just haven't heard it, unless there's a very strong case for putting Lafayette Street, there has to be a very strong case, I think, put forward for promoting Lafayette Street ahead of Second Street, and that needs to be done in a way that persuades the Second Street merchants, it seems to me, that, oh, well, okay, Lafayette Street, yes, absolutely, that is the higher priority. I think this seems to, I could see this being perceived as a vote of no confidence. I mean, that's maybe extreme, but I could see this being perceived as the city kind of pulling a rug out from under those guys, and so I think we ought to proceed carefully, and if there are really excellent reasons for promoting Lafayette Street, we need to explain those more clearly than, at least I saw them in the minutes.
My opinion on all of this is, you know, I think that both Lafayette and Second Street are, you know, valuable projects and things that we need to get done. The exact ordering of fiscal year 18 versus fiscal year 17, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic to moving Second Street up, there has been a significant amount of private investment, which I mentioned last meeting, you know, that I'm comfortable doing both of those, but I think both of those are leagues ahead of the latter two, so whichever of the priorities should be won to, and that's kind of how I feel about all that.
Yeah, I mean, I really don't have an issue either way, moving Second Street to first place, or keeping it at second, I really don't have an issue either way. I think both are worthy, and probably both are probably equally unsightly.
So then, in that case, I think, given that last year, we had Second Street as the number-one underground wiring priority, we ought to leave it there. As I say, unless there really is a strong case for Lafayette Street, I could just, I could imagine being, I could imagine the seeming, feeling discouraging to someone who is looking forward to finally getting their wires buried out there at that end of town.
Right, and I think the whole collection are going to feel Right. And I think the whole collection are going to feel somewhat discouraged by the fact that everything's been bummed down at fiscal year.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, I think that you're phrasing it as a sort of vote of no confidence, I think is, is very descriptive, you know, in terms of, we don't want that to be the oppression.
No, absolutely not. No.
That definitely was not the intention.
No, of course.
Not at all.
Yeah, of course.
Because from my recollection, we had Second Street first. And then in the CIP, South Henry Street, the proposed CIP, South Henry Street was ahead of Second Street. So I think we were still, we weren't, we weren't downplaying it.
We, I think, in planning commission, we, for the five-year plan, is when we changed that order. And it just, that wasn't in the, I think we did talk about changing the order.
That's what we suggested to change it, but it's not what actually happened.
Never happened, yeah.
So I, that was kind of, I think, where we were coming from. We didn't feel like we were sort of yawned over.
It was just substituting Lafayette for, for South Henry.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Exactly.
Well, so this, I think, would better reflect this commission's, anyway, sense of what the priorities ought to be, right?
Right.
Fine by me. Reed, can we make that change? To put Second Street first and Lafayette Street second?
Please.
Yes.
Is that would put Second Street for FY17, Lafayette for FY18?
Right.
Correct.
I had one additional, this is really a question. It seemed to me that the numbers, the dollar amount for the beautification or holiday improvements, or whatever we're calling this, it was at $15,000 a year. And then $15,000 didn't meet the threshold for being in the CIP. $20,000 was the threshold for being in the CIP. So the number went from 15 to 20. It stayed at 20 when it was pulled out of the CIP and went over into operating. Is 20 the right number, or is 15 the right number?
I think 20 is the right number, because the area covered by the pots has been expanded, and this amount of money is also to include holiday decorations, so more than just the flowerpots. And it moved from the CIP to operating, because originally, the money came from economic development sort of initiative funds, you know, like starter funds. And that if we really want this to be something that is a permanent project of the city and not just simply a one-off when EDA feels like that's how they want to spend their money that year, that needs to be moved into the permanent budget at that other level.
No, I think it makes sense to put it in, to get it out of CIP. I just was questioning, I had a, I had a sense that there was some, not mission creep, but you know, we changed the number to put it in one category, but then that changed. So if you're, if it's right that 20,000 is the right number, if that's the number that, that we really do need for this, then fine.
It's the number based on back-of-the-envelope, mission creep kind of things. I mean, we're not provided with numbers of what a pot costs, or what ribbons cost, or anything like that.
Right.
But if what we're doing currently is 15,000, we're going to expand that and take on this other project, that's where the 20,000 came from.
Okay. If my memory serves me correct, Jeff, we were told that the new project with extra pots was going to be approximately 16,000 for the year. And then we added 4,000 for the seasonal decorations.
I see. Okay. So it wasn't just a matter of meeting that CIP threshold?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we've done this deliberatively and not accidentally.
Right.
That's all. Okay.
Any other questions or comments about the letter to Mr. Puddle?
So we need to have a motion to approve that with the change.
Okay. Anyone like to do that?
A move that we approve the draft memorandum with the change in priority for Lafayette and Second Street underground wiring.
Second motion.
Mr. Shawler?
Aye.
Mr. Queen?
Aye.
Mr. Conlon?
Aye.
Mr. Corradas?
Aye.
Ms. Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Okay. We don't have anything under our new business category or other informational items, city council report, planning department monthly report, and the monthly financial statement. Any questions or comments on any one of those documents? No? Okay. We have a few public hearings scheduled for March 18, 2015. PCR 15-002, which is a request of Williamsburg Chrysler Jeep Kia for a special use permit for extension of their dealership. PCR 15-003, amend the zoning ordinance by revising the definition of hotel, motel, and visitor, to delete regulations pertaining to the length of stay. PCR 15-004, amend the zoning ordinance by revising provisions pertaining to residential uses allowed with a special use permit in the B2 district. So we should have a very interesting and robust meeting on the 18th.
And don't forget the two more.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I see. 15-005, amend sections of the 2013 comp plan pertaining to residential uses in quarter commercial land use areas. And then 15-006, amend the zoning ordinance to create the PDH, Plan Development Housing District. The PDH would allow conversion of hotel rooms currently located in the B2 to provide us up to 100 adaptive housing units with no more than 50 at an individual facility.
And those, the last four public hearings are all, it's all part of the package that was referred to the commission from council. So they're all related to each other.
Wonderful. Well, I guess we'll take that up on March 18. May we adjourn?